All right, Mr. Mayor. It is a little after 1:00 and it looks like we are all here. So we're ready to start when you are.
All right. Good afternoon. It is 1:00 in the afternoon, December 17th, in time to call through order the regular meeting of the Rancho Mirage City Council, the Library and Observatory Board, Housing Authority Board, and the City Council representing the redevelopment, the redevelopment's accessory agency. We'll move now to the flag salute and I can ask our city manager to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Kofi Antabom, our Director of Administrative Services, to lead us in the flag salute. Kofi?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic.
To the republic for which it stands and the nation under.
Okay, well, we got through that part. Like to do a roll call now, Kristi.
Councilmember Kite.
Here.
Councilmember Smotrich.
Here.
Councilmember Townsend.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Wile.
Here.
Mayor Hobart.
Here.
Now I'd like to ask the city manager to take over. We have a special presentation to make.
We do, Mr. Mayor, and thank you. It is a historic day in the city of Rancho Mirage. And we are here to recognize a very special person, Ruben Surlos. And the reason he is being recognized is as of this September, so September 2020, Ruben has been serving the city of Rancho Mirage and its residents for 35 years. And Ruben is now the longest-serving employee in the city's history. On the screen, you're going to see some photos of what the city was like in 1985 when Ruben started and what Ruben was like in 1985. And while this is going, we do have some current and former coworkers that have recorded some messages for Ruben. His impact on the city of Rancho Mirage is far and wide, both from a city standpoint and from a staff standpoint. Ruben, for those of us that know him, he is a very kind man. He is a person that if you need help, he'll help you in a heartbeat without any thought to himself. And all of us have experienced that in one way or another when you encounter Ruben. He is just such a joy to work with. He is an extremely honorable man. Prior to working for the city of Rancho Mirage, he was in the United States Marine Corps. He has been also volunteering for the Coast Guard for over 30 years as well. So Ruben has dedicated his life to service of the public, even before the city and with the city. And while he's with the city, he's also been volunteering with the Coast Guard. I often get emails from our residents that encounter Ruben at either one of our city facilities or one of our city parks. And they go out of their way to tell me what a joy Ruben is to speak with. They recall just him even not only remembering their names, but also the names of their dogs. Ruben goes out of his way to make people feel special. He goes out of his way to complete every assignment that he is given to the best of his ability. And Ruben, I just want to tell you, you know, your dedication and your work ethic is seen by everybody and it's truly appreciated. And you're not retiring, so nobody think this is a retirement presentation. And I hope we get to keep you another 35 years. So let's go ahead and roll the video and let's hear from some current and previous coworkers of Ruben's.
Hi, Ruben, this is David Barrett. Congratulations on 35. Great job, Ruben.
Congratulations, Ruben, on earning your 35-year service award and being the longest-serving employee in the history of Rancho Mirage. It's amazing to think that you have been with the city for 75% of its history. You have been and will continue to be an asset to the city. I appreciate everything you do.
Hi, Ruben. I just wanted to congratulate you on your 35 years of service for the city. What an accomplishment that is. And I don't think there's anyone who's close to you in terms of years that they've been here. I just want to thank you for all that you've done. I know the residents appreciate what you do. Often I get calls or I bump into people at the parks who ask for you by name and who always tell me the nice things that you do for them and the fact that you know their dog's names by heart. It's just a testament to the character that you have. So thank you, really appreciate all you do, Ruben.
Ruben Surlos, I understand you are celebrating 35 years with the fine city of Rancho Mirage. My weak math tells me that you started, I think, in 1985. And so I can say I've known you for at least 34 years because I worked there starting in 1986. You know, at that time, we had 25, 26 people that worked at the city and the yard was right behind City Hall, the old teepee there. So we all worked together. And Ruben was the kind of person that if I asked him if he had a picture, if he had something to nail into the wall, I could hang something up, he would bring me a little toolbox instead. So it's the old proverbial, don't provide a fish for dinner, but teach the person how to fish. And so Ruben's always been like that. He's got a kind heart. And I have to tell you, my wife Lynn says to the chagrin of probably all the rest of you, including myself, Ruben is Lynn's favorite person. So there you go. He's always been there. He shows up at the most opportune times when my wife had a flat tire when she worked at the CBB at the Atrium Design Center. He was there somehow and replaced her tire for her. And that was many, many years ago. Yeah, when my wife's uncle moved into town, he helped us move him in. And then when he passed away, he helped us pack his stuff up. And Ruben Surlos is, you should see the way he packs a pickup truck. I mean, you would think that he was a Tetris star. He just packed things in there just perfectly. A good man, no doubt about it. And congratulations, Ruben, on 35 years. And I hope at some point you put that cab over camper on your pickup truck and you go and enjoy the fruits of your labor, a terrific career. And on behalf of myself and my wife Lynn and daughter Candace and her fiancee now, as of two weeks ago, Ben Davis, congratulations, Ruben. And the city is much better for the work that you did that you have done there. And it wouldn't be the same without Ruben Surlos at the city of Rancho Mirage. So thank you, bottom of my heart. We'd love to take you out to dinner sometime, but I know how you like to order steak and lobster. So maybe it'll be a lunch. At any rate, good job, Ruben. Love you, man.
Hey, Ruben, I can't believe 35 years. Heck, you must have been like 15 when you started there or something. I mean, that's crazy. That's amazing. Congratulations. 35 years. I think you may be the longest city employee ever. And I think, because I was there at 33, but yeah, 85. That's I was the assistant city manager to Carl Hatfield, if you remember Carl, who was the city manager then. And I remember you being around and you were doing different jobs. And I always remember you were incredible and that you were always where you were supposed to be, willing to. And, you know, people always said, you know, you can always count on Ruben. And I mean, I remember during those years in the 90s particularly, when we were doing all those big things with the United Way. And I think Councilman Kite, that was a big thing for him, was the United Way annual fundraising stuff. And you were always doing things. We had those, their annual dinners were always at some resort. And you were always there to assist and put together our themed event. And then you always were there to have a good time. So I always appreciated that. And you and Larry, when you guys were doing the park, I mean, the park now is nothing like the park was then, but I always thought the Whitewater Park was one of the nicest parks in the valley. And you guys kept it maintained so well. And now you've got the amphitheater and everything else that's going on down there. But you know, the one thing I knew about you was when I remember we were having a conversation one day and I asked you, you know, what you were doing, you know, outside of City Hall. And you told me you classes, certifications, and doing your tours of duty on the ship. And I just thought, wow, man, he's really a motivated guy. He's got something he wants to do. And Ruben will make sure it gets done. And you did. You know, you're probably an admiral by now. I don't know. I don't know what your rank is, but you know, I guess maybe I'll have to call you admiral. So, you know, that'll be okay with me. You certainly deserve it. But again, congratulations on 35 years. The city wouldn't be where it is and looking the way it does without you and people like you. And you take pride in what you did. And you made the city, in my opinion, when I was there, and I think everybody's carrying it on, probably the premier city in the Coachella Valley. You know, you always drove through town and you could tell when you left Palm Desert and you could tell when you entered Cathedral City or the other way.
Sorry, that Zoom skipping out on us.
When you came in through any of the streets, particularly want to always be in there, always ready to pitch in. And you've done that for 35 years. I don't know, they ought to give you something special. I don't know what you get for 35 years. But I don't know what you give to an admiral anyway. You know, when you're an admiral, I mean, you give him his own ship, I guess. I mean, you know, tell him to go take his ship and go for a sale. I don't, I don't know. But Ruben, I don't know how long you're going to be with the city. I'm sure you're probably going to still work a few more years. But however long you're there, keep enjoying your work. Keep doing all the great work you do. I'm sure the city's glad to have you. And I'm sure the city will be sad when you do decide to hang it up. But 35 years, what an accomplishment. Well, Ruben, you have a good one. Thanks for the 35 years. And we'll get together when the pandemic allows us. We'll have lunch, have a beer or two, and we'll enjoy each other's company. Again, congratulations.
Well, Admiral, you want to come down and make some comments? While you're coming down, Ruben, from now on, you get the distinct pleasure of every day you show up to work is historic. So, you know, there's a lot of ups and downs in a 35-year career. And you have persevered through them all. And you have the respect of everyone here. So thank you for everything you've done for the city of Rancho Mirage. Come on down, Ruben.
I'm just going to say a few words. Thank you all. Yes, 35 years doesn't seem long for me. I don't count years coming to work. I count the days that I come to work and have fun and make sure that when I go home, that I did finish the project. And if I didn't, I make sure the first thing in the morning, I'll continue doing what I left behind. I do want to say thanks to all the past employees that worked for the city of Rancho Mirage from 85 to the present. Without them, I wouldn't be who I am. I also like to make a special introduction that I was not aware of, but I'm surprised and they're actually helping me in a way that I'm standing here. My son, Angel Rojas, and my great-daughter-in-law, Saida. They're here to support me and I was surprised that they were here and I'm very proud that they're here because that's part of my life, besides my work, besides the Coast Guard, besides my education. And all of you that make me who I am, I can't be myself. I left you a little note. I say that without my grandmother and mother not guiding me in the early years, I think that I would have had a hard time. But they made sure that I would be where I am. And so I'm thankful for that. Thank you, all of you. And I don't plan on retiring tomorrow, next week, next year, but someday it will come. And it will be Saturday I will go because I've known a lot of, a lot of good friends, a lot of great workers and a lot of great people. And the residents are also a part of my encouragement. I do get to know their dogs because I spend more time with them than with the public. But yeah, it's a true statement. I like everything that I do and I always say three things before I go. Back in 95, when I was in interview, Bruce Harry, the director at that time, asked me three questions, a lot of questions. He said, what is your goal if the city accepts you? And I said, to become a supervisor or a manager within three to five years. He goes, great, that's a good answer. The second one, he goes, what happens if you don't like what you see at the city of Rancho Mirage? I said, well, I can't answer that one because I had never been in the city of Rancho Mirage. And he goes, but what happens if the city of Rancho Mirage accepts you? And I'll say, I'll adapt to it. And for 35 years, I have adapted to it. And yes, there's ups and downs and it's what you make out of it. So I want to say thank to all of you. Cindy Alme, that's my anchors of work. Sevia, Gloria, and again, my supporters, Diana, my new coworker for me, Erin, Jesse and Jacqueline up in the standing over there, Far Marshall. So thank you again. It's a proud moment for me. And yes, I'm happy.
Thank you, Ruben. Does the council want to make any comments at this time?
Yes, I'd like to. Ruben, I want to tell you that you are the kind of person that makes each of us a better person. Your qualities, your integrity, your manner makes us proud. And you are just an incredible example for all of us. It wasn't but a few weeks ago, Ruben, that you stopped me after Veterans Day when I had made comments about being a veteran and saluted my fellow veterans, that you told me that you didn't know I was in the military and I didn't know that you were in the military. And we chatted about that. Ruben, you're a humble man. You're an outstanding man. And thank you for giving me the honor of knowing you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Isaiah.
Very good. Ruben, this is Charlie. I want to tell you that I remember when we all stood at the park and put the shovel in the ground to turn it over, you were there to build the amphitheater. And through that whole experience, all the way up to where it is today, watching it and being there for everybody, answering all the questions, on top of everything, bringing it up through the years to the state-of-the-art theater that it is today. And I remember you for that and your graciousness. And yes, remembering my name, I appreciated that too. Bless you and what a wonderful career and many more years left with Rancho Mirage.
Ruben, this is Richard. And certainly the city of Rancho Mirage would be different if you were not here. You really have put Rancho Mirage on the map for being the number one city in the area. You're the number one person and you always will be. You've done a great job. Look forward, as everybody else has said, to work with you in the future. And congratulations. It's been great knowing you and look forward to the future.
Okay, well, if I can go next, I'd like to add my congratulations also to Ruben. So much is said about him with his integrity and his desire to be helpful. But one of the finest attributes, I believe, about a person and certainly holds true with Ruben is that I've never heard an unkind word spoken about Ruben. Everything has been positive. There's never been a negative word. And he has lived up to his reputation every day of the week. And it's always a pleasure knowing how much pleasure he brings to everyone else. So congratulations again, Ruben. We wish you many more healthy and healthy years. And please feel free to stay around as long as you like and as long as we can have you. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Lastly, Ruben, this is Mayor Hobart. Your contribution to this city is seen through various eyes. Obviously, through the things that you do, you actually perform or you teach somebody how to do it. But you have influence far beyond what anybody could ever expect out of an employee. You've had so much influence on this city that they'll have a record that stands forever. And we, they will miss you, but we hope we don't begin to miss you for a considerable period of time. Your family has to know that this city believes you are exemplary employee, an exemplary person. And there's nobody going to take your place unless you ever decide to retire. Thanks, Ruben.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Isaiah.
Thank you, Ruben.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Isaiah, is there anything to keep us from going on to non-agenda public comments?
No, thank you. We'll move on to the non-agenda public comment. This is an opportunity for a member of the public to speak on an issue that is not on today's agenda for a maximum of three minutes per speaker. If you're participating remotely, you can press the raised hand button on Zoom. If you're on the telephone, it's star nine. Before we go to those that are remote, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to make a non-agenda public comment? Okay, seeing none, we will go to our remote audience. Mr. Brad Anderson, go ahead.
Yes, hi, this is Brad Anderson. I live at 37043 Berber Drive in the city. I just witnessed your presentation to one of your employees for 35 years. That's remarkable. And I think he must be in a department that he doesn't have the influences of the city council and the city manager maybe hanging over him as heavily. But it's quite an accomplishment. I'm sorry, I can't talk today. But it's quite, quite a deed to do that length of time in this city. Because this city is remarkable. It has been. When I first moved here, I thought this is one of the best cities to live in. And if you could work in it, you'd probably be awesome. So and that, and he had the opportunity to do that. So, but I wanted to mention, of course, I noticed he said adapt to things and that's how he got along. And I know myself, I could adapt to things too. But when you adapt to, I want to say a strong word, corruption. It's not okay. And when you have liberties taken from you, that's not okay. So I'm going off on a limb, but I've taken your time up before talking about your code compliance and how they're giving me a citation for light in my backyard. And now we're going to appeal all that. But I don't have any information. The city won't release any records to me, refusing to do that. And I'm supposed to defend myself on some kind of chopped up charge of retaliation. And, but anyway, next year, next city council meeting, I'll go ahead and submit a paper of all the stuff that I've gone through and all the contacts. And it'll be interesting reading. But I just, hopefully it doesn't come to that, but it's going to. So thank you and I will listen for your meeting. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. We did have one person write in a letter and request that we read that. Kristi, would you do that now, please?
Certainly. So the letter. Good afternoon, my name is Jared P. Danine Shanstrom. And I'm writing to you today about the STR Public Neighborhood Ban. You have heard from many STR owners, but today I speak as an STR employee and a member of V R O N Rancho Mirage. I moved here just over a year ago to begin my career as the catering sales executive for the Weston Mission Hills. And my wife took a position as an STR property manager for a small family-owned company, one that had been operating without a single complaint for the last nine years. When the pandemic hit, I was furloughed from the Weston. As a new California resident, I did not qualify for full unemployment benefits. So to make ends meet, I took a position alongside my wife. As an STR employee, I built a customer management data program, upgraded their lighting, installed smart home systems, painted the homes and other general handyman work. These beautiful homes are located in the Tamris neighborhood and have never received a complaint. And their neighbors have actually spoken in front of this city council. I have worked in the hotel industry for almost 10 years and I can assure you these properties are not mini motels. They are mini oasis's and provide those who don't have an opportunity to live here to experience the wonder that is living in Rancho Mirage. My question for the council members is this. You have now taken away the only source of income my wife and I have had for the last seven months. What should I do now? My hotel is back open, as Councilman Wile mentioned, after attending their Christmas tree lighting, but I'm not back at work and do not see a return anytime soon. So I ask again, what should I do now? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing no one else that wants to make a non-agenda public comment, we'll go ahead and close that portion of the meeting and move to council member comment.
Okay, on council member comments, I'd like to go first. Will you breathe? I wanted to report to the public that on December 7, 2020, the city of Rancho Mirage lost one of its gifted and valued residents, Arthur Newman, at age 93. Arthur was an effective and cordial member of the Rancho Mirage City Council from 1993 to 1998. He passed away after a lengthy illness. Arthur was initially appointed to the city council by a three-to-one vote. In 1994, he was elected to a full four-year term. He served for approximately five years in all. Among his achievements was his successful opposition to those who advocated building a new city hall in the area where the river was eventually built. Arthur served on active duty with the United States Army Air Force during World War II. His famed brother, Academy Award-winning actor Paul Newman, also served on active duty during the Second World War. Arthur is survived by his wife, Patty Newman. Who would like to go next? Anybody here, anybody?
Councilmember Townsend, you're on mute.
I can't unmute it.
We can hear you now.
All right, I got it now. All right, I'm on. Thank you, Dana. Each year for the past nine years, the Human Rights Campaign has published its Municipal Equality Index. The rate, and they rate a total of 506 cities from every state in the nation on 49 different criteria. This reflects the largest number of top-scoring municipalities in the nine-year history. Out of the 506 cities, 94 cities earned the maximum score of 100 points, with Rancho Mirage being one of them. Cities are scored on several criteria, including but not limited to nondiscrimination laws, municipal services, law enforcement, and leadership on LGBTQ equality. Also, congratulations to the city of Palm Springs and Cathedral City, with both scored the maximum of 100 points on the Municipal Equality Index. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mayor, this is Richard. Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mayor. The holiday season is upon. The holiday season is upon us, and it's been a tough year with many uncertainties. I am so proud of all of our city staff that has worked diligently to assist in any way they could with our city and our residents. I'd like to thank each and every one of you. From my family to yours, I want to wish everyone a safe and healthy holiday season, and hopefully 2021 will be a better year. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, please?
You may.
I received a letter from a resident during the week that I'd like to read. And basically, it says that many years ago, I signed a petition to ban drive-throughs on Highway 111 in Ranch Mirage. The times have changed. In those days, men wore a tie to Wally's and the McAllen, and we had formal dinner parties and dances at our country club. Ranch Mirage was too classy in those days for drive-ins. However, if we want to attract younger people at Ranch Mirage, we have to change with the times. Thank you for 30 wonderful years living in paradise. I think that shows a great deal of far sightedness and realism as to where we are today. I think Isaiah probably will have a comment regarding the success of our drive-through COVID-19 testing at the library. At last count, it probably is in the 4,000, could be even as many as 5,000 people have availed themselves of this drive-through. And we know the success that CBS Pharmacy has on just their normal prescriptions, their testing, the various other establishments. And that's where we are in today's day and age. So I want to thank this particular individual for being aware of the times, and that's where we are. And in conclusion, I too, this being our last meeting prior to the end of the year, I want to wish everyone a most happy, healthy new year, and we look forward to next year being in a much more safe environment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor? Okay. Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I would like to go next. And thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I would also like to extend my sincerest condolences to the entire Arthur Newman family. Arthur was an incredible man. He was a good man. He was always a gentleman. He had a wonderful sense of humor, and he will certainly be sorely missed not only in Ranch Mirage, but throughout the entire Coachella Valley. So I wanted to let the family know that you are certainly in my thoughts. Secondly, I would like to address some comments made by a speaker at both the city council meeting on December 3 and also at the planning commission meeting held last week. There are a few needed corrections regarding the speaker's comments relating to our Ranch Mirage High School. The speaker stated that legal action was taken by the city of Ranch Mirage to prevent the building of the Ranch Mirage High School. Actually, Ranch Mirage High School was very much wanted and very much needed in our city. But the city did file a sequel lawsuit against the Palm Springs Unified School District to move the sports field and the proposed extremely bright sporting lights from the west side of the property to the east side of the property to protect the residents of the Tuscany Residential Development from noise and from what would be intrusive glaring lights. The lawsuit was later dropped, but as a result of our action, concessions were made by the Palm Springs School District, which lowered the sports field several feet, moved it further away from the residential area, as well as improved the lighting problems. And there was no increase in property taxes with the building of the high school. The speaker also stated that the Tuscany Development residents, quote, "are not even close to a physical building or the school." And Jason is putting up the slide that shows that you can see that the development of Tuscany is actually adjacent to the high school. So I want, thank you, Jason. I wanted to not only correct the record, but also say we absolutely love our Ranch Mirage High School, and we take great pride in the school's accomplishments as well as the students' accomplishments. And we are most supportive when they are in need of any financial help. In fact, since the opening of the school, the city has provided $173,000 to fund their educational programs, their athletic programs, their theater programs, and their special student programs. We've even funded their Every 15 Minutes events, which is a program that deals with safe driving. We are also very proud of the school because we welcome students not only from Ranch Mirage, but from Palm Desert, Thousand Palms, and Cathedral City. But the speaker also stated that the city has serious conflict of interest problems. And that conflict of interest problem, all those problems, she, the speaker said, were rampant in cities like Palm Springs and Los Angeles. So I would like to point out that those cities have had alleged criminal activities. What's interesting is that the speaker used the term conflict of interest, but I believe most people would say differences of opinions. And yes, there will always be differences of opinions with city projects, and that's why we're here. We're here to hear everyone's opinions. We're here to hear their thoughts, and we're here to hear their suggestions. But overall, I think the city has done a pretty remarkable job with city projects. We did great with adding beautiful stained glass windows to the library, as well as building a very large community room, which is overflowing on numerous occasions during the year. We did a great job with establishing our annual Riders Festival held at our wonderful library. We did great things with providing many miles of bicycle paths. We've done great things with our assistance in the building of the Ritz-Carlton, which overlooks our city of Ranch Mirage. But keep in mind, please, that all those projects created differences of opinions. But I truly believe that the right choices were made with all of those project decisions. And although we can't please everyone all the time, it's not because we are not trying. So in closing, I would like to wish everyone a wonderful last day of Hanukkah, a Merry Christmas, and a much, much better year to come for everyone. Thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Well, Isaiah, I guess you're at bat again.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one comment. I did want to take a minute to acknowledge all of our staff here at the city of Ranch Mirage. 2020 has been an extremely difficult year. We've been one of the few city halls that have remained open to serve the public, and that is a direct result of our great staff and their dedication to their jobs. And so I just wanted to acknowledge them and the work that they put in for the residents of this city and thank them for that dedication because it has been a difficult year. But they have persevered, and we have stayed open for the public. Our library has been open in a to-go model. So I just wanted to take a minute and acknowledge that accomplishment. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. Continue if you have other comments. Otherwise, we'll move to the consent agenda.
You know, Mr. Mayor, we're having a hard time hearing you. Could you get a little bit, can you scoot up closer to your computer? I think you were asking for a motion on the minutes, but I couldn't quite hear you.
No, I didn't. What I was going to do was ask for a motion on the minutes.
I make a motion to accept.
I'll second that.
Those in favor, raise your hands.
Well, we'll go ahead and let Kristi take the vote.
Kristi, I just wanted to say.
Certainly. Councilmember Kite?
You're on mute, council member. Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Okay, we'll move to consent calendar, Isaiah.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mayor and members of the council, you have five items on your consent calendar for consideration. Item number one is the adoption of Resolution 2020 SA Next in Order, approving and adopting a recognized obligation payment schedule and administrative budget for fiscal year 2021-2022 pursuant to Assembly Bills 26X1 and 1484. Item number two is the final acceptance of the Citywide Slurry Project CP20-362. Item number three is the receive and file the annual and five-year development impact fee reports. Item number four are contracts, and item number five are demands. Before I go to the council, if any member of the public would like to speak on one of these five items, now is the time to do so. If you are on Zoom, you would hit the raise hand button. If you're on the telephone, you would hit star nine to alert us that you'd like to speak on one of the consent calendar items. Kristi, do we have any written communication on any of these items?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone here in the audience in person that would like to speak on one of these items? Okay, seeing no one, we will go back to our remote. Okay, seeing no one there either, I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I guess. Is there a motion to approve?
Yes, I'll make a motion, Mr. Mayor, to accept the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kristi, please take the vote.
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
Thank you, Kristi. We will now move on to our action calendar. So item number six on our agenda are two resolutions that are required for submittal of applications for a CalRecycle grant. And Tiana McAmol is going to do this presentation. Tiana, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. The item I'll be discussing today is the adoption of required documents for the submittal of applications for all CalRecycle grants. California's Department of Resource Recycling and Recovery, CalRecycle, is offering the Beverage Container Recycling Grant, which issues a maximum of $250,000 per individual grant award. The purpose of this grant is to promote increased recycling of beverage containers throughout California and reduce beverage container litter in the waste stream. Council's action today is the adoption of two required documents, which will finalize the city's application for funding. The first required document is the adoption of an environmentally preferable purchasing and practices policy. Council's adoption of this policy seeks only to memorialize practices currently implemented by the city. Examples of these practices include the purchase of products that include recycled content and the purchase of products and practices that conserve energy and water. The second required document is the adoption of a resolution authorizing specific grant-related matters, which includes the authorization of submittal of applications, the identification of a five-year time period during which authorizations are valid, and the identification of a signature authority authorized to sign all grant-related documents. These are the two required documents, and I'd now like to discuss the grant project in which Ranch Mirage is applying for. The city of Ranch Mirage has submitted an application requesting funding of approximately $208,000. If grant funds are approved, a new and improved recycling infrastructure will be created in July 2021 through the installation of 20 new receptacles in recreational areas and public spaces throughout our city. On the screen is an image of what these receptacles will look like. As you can see, one portion accepts recycling material and the other accepts trash. Some important highlights to note, they compress all material collected through solar power, which allows five times the capacity of a traditional bin. They include automated real-time collection notifications, which monitors the level of material collected notifying the Public Works team when it needs to be emptied. And lastly, they're all contactless. As you can see, the trash portion has a foot pedal to open and throw away trash, which is especially great for the times that we're living in now. There is no fiscal impact as a result of council's action today. That concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation, Tiana. Let's go ahead and open up the public comment period on this item. So if you would like to make a comment, now is the time to do so. You would press the raise hand button on the Zoom platform or star nine on your telephone if you are participating remotely. Kristi, do you have any written communication on this item?
We do not.
Thank you. Anyone here in person want to speak on this item? Okay, let's go back to our remote audience. And I'm not seeing anyone that would like to make a comment there either. So we'll go ahead and close the public comment period on this item, and I'll return it to the council, Mr. Mayor.
Isaiah, I have a question.
Yes.
Tiana, where are these receptacles going to be located?
They're going to be installed at each of our city parks, city hall, and the library.
Thank you. Is this the first time we've made application for this?
Yes, this is our first time applying for this specific grant application.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
How often do you get free money to upgrade your trash cans?
Well, if you don't have any additional comment, we have a motion.
All right, I will make the motion that the city council, A, adopt Resolution Number 2020 Next in Order, adopting environmental preferable purchasing and practice policy for the city of Ranch Mirage; B, adopt Resolution Number 2020 Next in Order authorizing the submittal of applications for all CalRecycle grants for which the city of Ranch Mirage is eligible.
And I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Kristi, will you please do the vote?
Councilmember Kite?
Yes.
Councilmember Smotrich?
Yes.
Councilmember Townsend?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Wile?
Yes.
Mayor Hobart?
Yes.
Motion carries 5-0.
All right, great. We will now move on to agenda item number seven, which is our COVID-19 State of Emergency Update and Related Actions. And I will turn this presentation over to Gabe Cottin, our Director of Marketing. Gabe?
Thank you, Mr. Hagerman, and a prelude to your birthday on Saturday. Happy birthday.
Oh, gosh.
Sorry, we didn't do the same fanfare that we did last year, but
Thank you.
if it ever does fall on a council meeting again, you can rest assured that we will, we will go big.
We'll never forget after you turn 30.
So, Mr. Mayor and council, wanted to just, we have a couple of things to just update you on today regarding our COVID updates. And so the first one is just that we've, we're seeing great success at our, at our drive-through at the library and observatory drive-through with Curative, with our partnership with Curative to date. So a big thank you to our library, observatory staff, Streets Team, Public Works. It's been a huge effort. We were the first city to launch any kind of test. We were the first city to launch, uh, any kind of testing like this, and as often is the case, you have, uh, um, a lot of the other cities following suit. I think La Quinta was going to open one today, um, and so various other cities are trying this, but our demand is, uh, is, is been very significant. So to date, we've done 7,804 tests. Um, we've, we're averaging about 557 a day. On Tuesday, we saw our highest number of testing. We went from, uh, 675 the previous week to 940. Yesterday had 806, and, uh, today, as of 1:00 PM today, when the council meeting started, we'd already done 509, uh, tests. Um, and so we've, because the demand is strong, it was set to expire on, uh, December 31st. We've extended it with Curative through January 30th, uh, with contingent on if the demand is still, is still there. So as long as the demand is 200 to 300 per day, we'll continue. If it drops below that, then we'll, uh, we'll, uh, come up with a plan to phase that out. But right now, um, it continues to be a fantastic offering for our residents and neighboring cities. We, uh, just to note that the, the drive, uh, our drive-through testing will be closed on, uh, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, December 24th and 25th, and New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, December 31st and, uh, January 1st of 2021. Uh, the hours of operation are 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM, Tuesday through Saturday, and, uh, walk-ups are extremely limited, so we've just raised our daily, uh, appointments from 3:50 to 5:50 per day. So we are encouraging residents and guests to go online to curative.com or go to the city's website and, uh, and book an appointment. And then, uh, second is our Great Plates Program continues to go strong. Uh, the county just announced that they're phasing their program out as of, uh, December 30th, but, um, the program is approved through January 7th. And to date, uh, we've delivered, uh, there's 322 participants. Uh, through today, we've delivered, I'm sorry, through tomorrow, we will have delivered 165 meals, 165,000 meals to residents' doorstep over the seven months that this program has been active. Uh, that represents about 3.6 million, uh, a little over 3.6 million to area restaurants that are participating, represents over 350 employees, and the city's cost share after reimbursed for, after reimbursement is 227,000, uh, of that. That completes, uh, our update, and I'm available for any questions or comments.
Thank you for the presentation. Before we go to the council, uh, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing on this item. So if any member of the public would like to speak on this item, now is the time to do so. You would hit the raise hand button on Zoom or star nine on your telephone. Christie, did we have any written communication on this item?
No.
Okay. Uh, anyone in person wish to speak on this item? Okay, see no one in person. Let's go to our remote audience. Again, you would hit the raise hand button or star nine. All right, I'm not, uh, seeing anyone that wishes to speak on this item, so, uh, Mayor, I'll turn it over to the council.
Any comments? Well, um, if we can take any action.
Repeat that, Dana.
Yeah, it says that we can take any action deemed necessary. Does anybody wish to propose any action that they deem necessary?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I, I would like to just note one thing. Um, yeah, the, um, we've all seen the news, uh, there's some very concerning increases in the virus activity. There's very low availability of ICU beds, uh, which is part of the reason the state has implemented this, uh, these restrictive health orders that we're under now. But, uh, that's also plain true for our testing site at the library. Uh, we're now seeing positivity rates that are above 15%. Uh, I did speak with the city manager in the city of Riverside, and they were seeing positivity rates at their Curative test sites over 20%. Uh, so the virus activity is, is still very high, and so it's just a nice reminder for all of us to wear your mask, um, take your, uh, health and, uh, safety very seriously, and continue to socially distance and wash your hands and do the things that we've all been doing. But right now is a pretty critical period, and, um, really what we're trying to do is make sure that anyone that needs it has, uh, the available hospital bed and the available care. Uh, there is definitely some positive news on the horizon, um, amidst these higher numbers is they are just starting to distribute the vaccine. Uh, those are going to, uh, frontline healthcare workers first. Uh, so our local valley hospitals did start to get their first shipments of the vaccine for their frontline healthcare workers that are taking care of all of us. Uh, so that's some very positive news, and that will continue to roll out as they ramp up production of the vaccine. Uh, but with that, there's no specific action, uh, that staff is requesting at this point.
Well, um, I don't have anything for that. Does anybody have anything they want to add?
Not for me.
We have a closed session, I believe, so.
Yeah. We'll, uh, go ahead and ask our city attorney to summarize the, uh, closed session agenda.
Hello, everybody. I'm excited to say that I tested negative again. You know, when I first got my first results, I thought, oh, I'm so happy about this. I'm going to send out a copy of my testing letter and realized my birth date is on there. And I thought, I don't want people to see that and realize he must be dying his hair in any event. So at this point, the city council is going to recess into closed session, um, to confer with me, um, regarding significant exposure to litigation, and that's going to be pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9. That's one potential case, and this is related to the short-term Reynolds issue. We've received several letters, including some letters from attorneys, so I want to have an opportunity to discuss that with the city council in closed session. The other item is pertaining to existing litigation pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, and that pertains to the case known as Hometown Colony versus City of Rancho Mirage. And so those are the only two issues we're going to discuss in closed session today. And I don't dye my hair.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, the city council will now recess into closed session. It is 2:59, and we are coming out of closed session, and there are no reportable actions taken in closed session. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.